The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Next, we need to order at nine o'clock. Um, first up is to approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2024 by your meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the claims filed with county auditor for the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove employee claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of two thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, did everybody get a chance to look at the monthly employee health plan report?
Yes, I did, and I'd like to look some.
All right, and I have a motion to approve.
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Safety and EMA, could you do that sometime?
What was that?
Is there a question?
Approve appraisal invoice in the amount of nine hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, items for discussion, place on file the following manure management plans, WD Farms Incorporated, Section fifteen, Perry Township, WB Farms Incorporated, Section twenty-one, Perry Township, Tenderloin Ranch, Middlefield Township, Section thirteen, Woski Site, Kono Township, Section twelve, Steve Copenhagen, Washington, Section one, Doug Rec, Ryren Township, Section twenty-five, Ellen Monahan, Ellen Monahan Farms, Middlefield Township, Section thirty-five, Buffalo Township, Section twenty-six, F and F Port, Liberty Township, Section twenty-five.
And place all them on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, nine ten, we will do the opening bids for the Rocklighting. Do we have anybody from the Fair Association here? We could move them up.
I don't think they were going to be here till nine ten.
Okay.
Hi.
Good morning.
Public comments for seven minutes?
We can talk about the legislative meeting that we had on Saturday. Uh, there was several pieces of legislation there. Um, one of them was House File seven eighteen that passed last year, which was a three percent, three percent cap on raising property taxes. And it'll impact all the counties, but particularly those of us that are set down on the minimum taxation rates now. Because in theory, you couldn't, um, and if this is where Senator Drumbach made the comment, you know, that there are some ways to get around some of this where you raise beyond the three percent. But where we're taxing at the minimum, if we didn't get our seventy-five percent minimum, our valuations go up five, six percent. We're only increasing by three. And we don't need the seventy-five. We can't let any farm market projects either. We can't let projects through the states, what they're saying, but I know three oh nine ten is clear. We can't let farm market projects. So what's going on there is Martinair, Woodbury County Engineer says he's been working on this because he's, even though he's up there at about a hundred and fourteen percent above the minimum, uh, because the board's putting in a lot of other monies, that they can actually, uh, they're actually working on a solution to this within the legislation. And the individual that wrote the prior bill is working on an amendment to that bill. And the thoughts are keep it well profiled. Then there's another piece of legislation, and maybe you guys don't want to talk about this stuff right now, but, um, we had seven minutes for public comments.
Mm-hmm.
We did discuss briefly the one that would require us to upgrade all driveways and, um, when we do a resurfacing project. And basically, where's the money going to come from for that? Our road system's so underfunded right now, how can we add additional comments on there? Um, I got the feeling, again, we're dealing with politicians that can smooth talk words, but I got the feeling that one wasn't going very far. No, there's legislation out there right now that would mandate that before we could put them out in the field, we'd have to send a blade operator to school. And I gotta say, half of our legislators weren't aware of that. The other half was aware of it and did get on a committee. And the comment was made that that one won't go very far. And then there's legislation that would take the local option sales tax, make that statewide, or put it at the state level, and they would backfill.
Hmm. We all know how backfill worked on
everything else.
Prior. Yeah, those were, those were my comments exactly at, at the legislative conference.
Yeah.
Our legislative coffee.
Yeah.
There wasn't a coffee there either.
Well, it really got me, Brian, is when they made the statements that said that this is, these are bills, some of the stuff we brought up, that even came to a floor for the vote, for discussion and vote, and they said, well, how, how do we express our opinion, how we feel about things, so you know how maybe you should address these things when it comes to a vote?
Yeah, no, and that was my comment. Now's the time to talk about it before they get to the vote. Particularly that one with the motor, even the young man from the farmer group says, no, that's not needed. Why goes, there's only one firm out there right now that does true motor grader training, other than, other than entrance, which in May is, will probably have school here in Independence even again. They've done it regularly.
Does Ant Hawk I have motor grader training?
They have equipment operator school, but, um, those guys, when they start out, yeah, it's not really maintaining a road.
It's more of a compact construction, uh, skid loaders, mini operators, stuff like that.
I think they go through the motor grader some too, but it's not, it's not how to maintain a road. And part of the catch is when those guys come out, um, the bacon Davis wage is the minimum for an equipment operator is about thirty-five dollars an hour right now. We're paying about twenty-five dollars an hour, so how am I going to recruit these guys that are going to work for thirty-five an hour to come to work for twenty-five an hour?
With county benefits.
Well, the, actually, most of the guys all have benefits too. If you work for me, Arnie.
They don't have hipers.
No, they don't have hipers, but if they work for Bruni, they'll have to get a free new pickup. You get a new pickup.
I'd rather have hipers and pickup.
I would too. No, and there's no question. Well, the big, big reason we can tend to hold and recruit is because they're not on the road on the contract crews on the town. They tend to work ten, twelve hour days in the summer times. They might work some Saturdays in the summer time. That's where, that's where our recruiting comes in. They're home. Salaries, we can't compete. And so the young guys coming out of Hawkeye, we're not a real candidate for them.
Right.
Are you saying that if they were to run blade for a private contractor, that they wouldn't need the training they're requiring you to have?
Probably, but, um, of our candidates, we rarely get anybody that's run blade for a contractor.
Right.
Because the contractors don't have that many blades anymore.
No.
Well, I've been running them maybe.
I see.
You betcha. Those are too great.
Always.
Yes, you know, you have a lot more talent than
You guys get more into the electronics on the contract side. Electronic grade control foot, right? We haven't really invested in trying to go that way yet. How much more money do we want to spend on a motor grader when that will put me in the four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand category almost?
All right, about thirty seconds to
I could probably step up to the front.
Opening bids for Rocklighting, those who need to, from forward.
Okay, we received two bids, one from Bruning Rock Products and one from BMC Evergates. Going to open from Bruning. And for, is Division one, Division one, the Northern Division, for fifty-two thousand eight hundred tons. It was thirteen point nine one nine nine per ton for a total of seven hundred thirty-four thousand nine seventy point seven two.
Seven hundred in what?
Thirty-four, nine seventy, seventy-two. And then for Division two, the Southern Division, uh, for the same amount of tonnage, it was fourteen point four seven nine nine, unit price, total amount, seven, six, four, five, three, eight, point seven, two. Okay. Steve? Okay, Division one, the Northern Division, same amount of tonnage, unit price, fourteen oh two, total amount, seven, four, zero, two, five, six. And then for Division two, the Southern Division, uh, same tonnage, unit price, fourteen twenty-one, for a total amount of seven, five, oh, two, eight, eight.
Bruning is, uh, the Northern is less, and then for the Southern, BMC would be less.
Correct.
Over?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve Bruning for the Northern and BMC for the Southern.
I will second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get the contracts out. They did leave some hats up here for you guys and some
No, that's for yours.
Let me, that's for your guys.
That's for your
Notepads. Do they go out to the shop?
They do, yeah.
Okay.
Everything that's left there is your
Did you have any further questions to be?
No.
Okay, I'm going to drop off for Friday. He's on that turf. He wants me to handle this with this monthly meeting, but
Are you talking about the twentieth?
That's, no, that's this Fri- this Friday is the, um, yeah, and that's the Executive Board meeting, County Engineers Exec Board meeting.
Oh, okay, and then you're going to take off the twenty.
Yeah.
Good fun.
Yeah, good, good, good. Yeah, I'm supposed to go to four H horse judge and competition. It'll be good. It'll be good, yes.
To the grandkids, so.
Yes, yeah.
It's all good.
And it's, they won the regionals, so are the, we're high enough in regionals, they're going to the state competition. Thank you. We shall see you later, and these are nice and
And just make sure you put these on our, you know how to put them on the calendar that Jason created?
No, but I could do that. I'm going to Jason, talk to him. We'll do.
Thank you.
Stop down before you leave and fill it.
Yes, that's sometimes easier.
And I did come out there, we're probably going to have a couple of guys on Thursday. I will put a couple of guys going to look at excavator, excavators.
Okay.
And trying to figure out how, um, they don't make them like his old one. He likes the old ones overall, but he, he's afraid of having it rebuilt, which is about half the cost of new.
And if he rebuild it in, in two years, it breaks down then?
You're stuck, yeah.
Yep.
And part of it is his son was a heavy dozer in Michigan, Wisconsin, excuse me, Milwaukee. And they had it rebuilt and they went through the transmission three times after it was rebuilt.
Thank you, Brian. Public hearing, which is going to be a Stutzman zoning request. I have, uh, time for one public comment. If anybody wants to. For three minutes, so if they have time for one.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask, Commissioner.
You know, last week, we, we were in a discussion, and I said you went to a, uh, energy webinar or something like that. You said you asked two que- we ran out of time, you said.
Yeah.
You asked two questions and what was their response?
Well, I asked about, one of the asked about, and remember the second one, was about the bird and bat kill.
Okay.
And I was concerned about the study that had been done on that, how accurate that would be, the study on that, and, and then if something does happen to vertkill, is landowner or the contractor, the company going to report it if they find something laying out there? And then how accurate is the reporting done on it? And nobody really had an answer to that. They just hope everybody's honest about that, but we know how that all works.
Sure.
If somebody was, could return it in, some people not, you know, they might walk through with a shovel and bury it, you know.
But animals might eat them, but, but I know that one of the, like, city or the county or whatever we want to call them, that they talked about, that somebody may only show up every couple of weeks, well, you know.
By that time, a coyote or a fox or somebody else has, has got it, so, and I can't remember what the other one, I
I thought it was something about how many people were in favor or something.
Well, that, that was just my jest on it. This is like, there was an overwhelming, uh, amount that we're speaking protecting agri. High percentage of people spoke, all concerned about protecting agricultural land, and then how much was brought up, how much agricultural land has actually been lost over this several last couple of decades, uh, the millions of acres, it was on like a forty-four million acres or something like that, you know, just like unreal amount. And it's just not because of something that's happening on rural areas, you know, it's the urban sprawls and, and, and everything, and you know, when you have a manufacturing company come in, which is all set for economic development, they, they could easily eat up fifty acres, you know, on the side of community.
You know, and I know our, you know, our Republican people, uh, you know, the state senators, that type of thing, and, you know, Grassman, I get some of his publications, and he's really worried about the Chinese connected or Chinese owned businesses. Okay, well, I read that one, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's, it's a concern. Who's buying up and what purpose are they turning the land into?
Well, with the state, what we heard from the legislatures up there in Arlington, you know, and what they're, Saturday morning, is that they're trying to put additional teeth in that reporting, because some of these LLCs and everything is so deeply buried that you can't trace back to who the investors were, where the money actually came from. So they're requesting more openness about that, that end of reporting, and if, if they don't, there's going to be severe penalties and fines put on them.
All right, hate to interrupt people, but we're about thirty seconds out from nine twenty. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, this case is for the approval of, uh, Z is the we refer twenty twenty-four zero zero one requested by Raymond Street under rezone one point six three acres, plus or minus from A one agriculture to C commercial. Advocate needs to expand their warehouse storage for their business. In this location, as well, CSR, the advocate will only be rezoning one hundred and twenty-five feet to the east of sixteen sixty-four, one hundred and fiftieth street, and leaving a twenty-five foot area to the south portion of this property line to allow the owner to obtain access to his property. So, one hundred and fiftieth street, quite busy with several home occupation permits. Um, Jody Puff, uh, roughly a decade to twelve years ago, had constructed a home just to the east of this, on a pretty nice property, you're, uh, go by there. The, uh, strip of land there that is in blue, uh, this is to the north, this is the current warehouse commercial structure that's in, uh, business as we speak. There was a new well drilled, um, in this location right here, um, recently. Or as the, uh, staff recommends the approval with the condition that the applicant will obtain a base flood elevation certificate before construction of the warehouse begins. During the minutes of discussion from the P and Z, it was confirmed that the, uh, owner currently has a base flood elevation certificate for the current building, and that benchmark would be used to construct anything to the east. As you bring up the, uh, next, uh, slide, Amber. That'd be the CSR, so you can see us in regards to the CSR levels, uh, and this is the, uh, base flood elevation and the flood plain, and that's why we would confirm that the elevation, the benchmark is used to make sure it's one foot above, means the state and local ordinances shouldn't be an issue if the benchmark's already confirmed. They'll contact an engineer if and when project begins, I'll go out, confirm it, if heights and elevations are met. In regards to, uh, any calls, concerns, uh, there has been, uh, unique features. Again, uh, those parcels located within the hundred and five hundred year flood plain, CSR levels are average and below average for the Amish community. This community area is already active with several commercial uses, home infrastructure permits and home occupation permits. Um, pretty much straightforward. Again, it's an area where lower CSR, you can see it's CSR two fifty-one, you know, baseline commonly discussion wise is fifty-five, so it meets that obligation. Um, we did include five individuals that we reached out to via letter, no feedback. regards to the P and Z Commission. The, uh, motion was made by Taylor, seconded by Waters, and all in favor, it was a six to zero vote.
Do you have a question? Joining property owners, old or Amish is one of them.
Yeah, so there is a school just to the, uh,
And it's a school, is that?
Correct, yeah, just to the, uh, uh, east, and then it goes back on like small lane.
Any questions from the public?
When we, when we reach out to property and stuff like that, you might be having some business going in on the road and come off, say, I, they come off Highway one fifty or something, head down that, or something. The people that live on that road are going to see increased traffic and stuff like that. I just wonder if they should, do they have the opportunity to voice your opinion on if they think there's going to be excessive traffic increase on their road, they
So our current ordinance has always been this way, is, uh, um, five hundred feet less is who we notify, and we actually, pretty much every application will see this one with the brand nephew one moving forward, is we go out above, beyond any adjacent or adjoining property owners. So we go outside that pretty consistently with that five hundred feet. If the only other, uh, you know, option for them to see that would be public notice in the paper or on our website. Uh, or an option in the future to increase the ordinance to a thousand feet or whatever that number would be. In most counties, and we have always been five hundred.
Those are any questions from the public?
Ray- Raymond's in the back. Yeah.
And I did a, we did a flood whatever certificate for the whole, all the buildings, because they said I need insurance. And all the building floors are out of the flood plain. And when I built the store, I had to bring it up a foot above it, and they put it out of the flood plain, and if I add on there, it'll be the same level as the existing store there, so. Just to put in.
You have any questions, John? And can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a motion on the Stutzman zoning request.
I make a motion to approve and refresh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stop, give me a tell, when you report, can I go to your engineer and
Who wants to get that signal?
Yeah, have them send me them out. And then what they'll do is they could just send me an email and say the benchmark is and it's the southeast portion.
I have all that bill going by all you, I can bring that in and
be that condition.
Yes, yeah.
I mean
Just go.
Monday is cheap, yeah.
Burnt is
Exact bill. Stop in with zoning permit, which is free of charge. We'll leave the details, how wide and how long it's going to be, and at that point, we'll note the base for an elevation.
Two minutes.
Rich, you can go to state tournament, huh, here? Good for you. They both win, or did they place back?
Carter got second, um, he had to wrestle back. His first match, he was beating the kid eight one, slipped on some sweat on the mat. Kid took him down in pending. There's thirty seconds left in the third period. Heartbreak. But he worked his way back, so all that matters. Yeah.
So back, I didn't know.
Mm-hmm. And both Quich boys got in too, right? Yeah, so we have two sets of twins in Buchanan County that wrestled and made it to state.
But Buchanan was very well represented. Jessup took first, East Buchanan took second.
Mm-hmm.
Things did.
Second.
Second.
Six somewhere going.
Were very well represented then.
How many did Woski get in, Buzzy?
Eight.
Eight.
Wow.
EB got six, Indy six, and yeah, that's great. Jessup's nine.
Yeah. Jessup teams broke every record there was. Good job.
Yeah. Justin, these kids, right, from the south, Moscow, or?
They didn't lose any. Both, both teams will stay together. Both ways will stay together. Alright, we have nine thirty can have a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Alright.
So this is a young blood zoning request?
This is the case Z is in Zebra twenty twenty four zero zero two request by Bennett young blood to rezon point nine acres plus or minus from A one agriculture to R three residential. The Atkins trustees would like to parcel off agricultural lands from the dwelling. And do not prefer to include any ag land with the dwelling therefore. There is only a smaller lot size which we allow in R three district if you go and if you go back to the original plans. So if we uh have a idea this is the city in Jessup this is Baxter going to the uh north towards Fairbank you can see that it's. Uh joining the uh city limits of Jessup. And uh as you go to the next aerial imagery. Bowling's been established for quite some time and this would allow. Them to break off less than two acres of through your zone to the R three district and there is um. You know the only item that we would have to be unique with would be two things it they are hooked up to city water. With potential in the future that they might get annexed and that is very possible and then there is a septic map that Amber will bring up. That they're going to place an easement and that is the dash lines there. This is where the septic map you can see that it does protrude out into the farmland which is pretty common to go back Amber. And we did have the surveyor note that. And again easements are recorded and. Handled by an attorney by recording the documentation that the owners orders. So it is common to have those easements um and again it allows the land to be um continually farmed. Um if and uh when they would ever have in the future any issues. In regards to a uh new septic system we need to be installed with the technology the smaller footprint are pretty easy to do. There was a new uh well that was drilled in this property right here not too long ago and we could use this space over in here. To uh install a new septic system so there is space to do um anything in the future if needed. If that easement um in the septic field were to go bad. Obviously most of those that were put in was rock and pipe in the past. Fifty sixty years have no issues with them so I don't anticipate any issues but in case there is some flexibility to be proactive in the future. In regards to the technical review. And. Any comments that were made by the uh board our staff does recommend rather than the approval with the um conditions that only one. Blowing continue to be established and there will be a septic easement on file that we talked about pretty straightforward with that.
Chad if they were to be annexed into the city they'd be required to get. City sanitary sewer.
There's no septic out there. Only water.
No sewer depth okay so that's why they would have a septic so that's probably at the time that that was built. There's no uh site utilities close enough. And that number is commonly uh. Seven hundred feet most cities but each each city is different and they can uh move. That so there's been several within the city of Independence here recently innovative ag. Um the new grain bin site and the scales that they put up by Jensen's we put a septic in there Rusty Downly build a uh. Cabin. The elevations and the distance was too far so we permitted septics in the city it happens once in a while but again this is in the county. And then if that they ever did move forward with sanitary sewer to the north that would be an option for them to. To hook up. And I think they could waive that you know just depending on the situation and discussions between the city council. As far as uh. Any calls concerns? We did not have any CSR levels really don't matter because it's been a uh established structure. This would commonly be interpreted as a farmstead split you know two to four acres. Um but with them wanting to keep farmland in production that's why we're going to the R three. Um due to the fact that they're requesting less than two acres the rezoning change is being required to go to R three. The minor plot process will also be followed and at that time the city of Jessup with it being a subdivision will have the opportunity to review that. So uh we'll send that over to uh. The mayor and and the uh city hall septic system will need an easement as I mentioned before uh when the land transfers ownership.
Any other questions not really pertain to allowing or disallowing this request or something like that but that's south boundary is there actually a is there an offset in the right away boundary? But it's shown here on mine.
So yes there is. So and again that's a decision that Brian makes all the way through the county you'll see that they uh consistently will change that. Um and I would assume that he's potentially seeing a. A future growth or a widening of that road for some reason um and uh that's maybe why he has that there.
Okay.
That's pretty common if you look at aerial imagery throughout the county there's some narrowing and widening depending on the uh farmsteads.
We seen that out here on D twenty two out west here. That property we talked about out there yeah it's common to see that but. I just want to make sure that my drawing was showing the correct.
Yep. Yep um and again uh as far as the P and Z commission um motion by Taylor um to include the uh. Condition of the septic easement placed on file was seconded by Frank with a vote of six to zero to recommend the rezoning.
You know wasn't there also a condition that they just one one uh.
Correct.
One dwelling.
Do you have any comments from the public?
But one dwelling.
I'm sorry.
She want to explain that and Chad.
Yeah so um in the R three district allowable uses would allow for like apartment complexes and such.
Mm hmm.
And uh you know so with there only being one dwelling established there. The state allows P and Z and the board supervisors to attach a condition or restriction on a property when they rezoned it.
Will that affect mine to allow that or not?
No, no so we're only talking about this right here.
Okay so.
And.
Yeah that makes sense I guess.
Yeah so they.
It's just about language so.
If they were ever let's say that they knocked that house down in twenty years and they wanted to build a uh fourplex or a eightplex there. They would have to come in front of the board to remove that condition.
Okay.
It's an allowable use on R three but with the condition they would.
I just want to make sure.
Yes. Yep, good question.
Hmm. Any other questions?
Nothing else I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve that with the two conditions. On the septic and uh one dwelling.
One second there.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Talked about eagles earlier when I went up. With that legislative session up there. It was one field off to the west of one eighty seven there uh north of Lamont. Uh to the west of the highway there they were pretty close to highway we probably saw eagles out there out here.
At about thirty seconds. Alright.
Make a motion to open a public hearing on Indy properties.
Okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Hey this is for case uh P is the dog twenty twenty four zero zero one request. By Brad Nepper Indy properties for the preliminary plat with proposed major subdivision this property newly zoned. Previously in September sixth twenty twenty two to provide housing opportunities for people looking for a location near the golf course. Without the need to maintain a large property which is more typical for this area. So uh. As you forward Amber will bring this up obviously this area developed towards River Ridge Golf Course and and the Nollies here is the uh. They call it the leapy corner landing blend and. Ailer's property and then this is a subdivision developed by the blends that you can see several homes been constructed there over the past couple of years. Um in regards to the process of the preliminary plat. We do have the uh since it's within the two mile radius we do have the city P and Z and the council. Uh review the preliminary plat and then all the documents from the engineer. And the uh construction firm um is provided to us so with the contents of preliminary plat. Um all the items did come in eighteen of them were checked off along with the company material. Uh Lee Slank the engineer who worked with me on the test holes and talked about the septic design etcetera. Um with the P and Z body from the city um did come with a recommendation. To for emergency vehicles for the driveway to become twenty four foot wide with the radius of twenty feet versus fifteen feet wide. At the entrance and so um. That was uh also approved by the city council it then went to the P and Z body and they agreed with that all that stuff has been communicated and will come through in the final plat that will be the next phase. Um but uh everything else is is accompanied everything else is taken care of. I did take the opportunity with this figured that with all the calls and individuals that have. Been interested in this with comments that we'd have a few more people here today. And so that's not common for me to request a uh public hearing for the preliminary plat. But my feeling was if we got all the questions answered here. Um and the P and Z body and then on the phone with myself or people that stopped in the office. We then during the final plaque you could potentially waive the second third reading which I believe that the engineer and the construction firm was going to uh request.
Yeah.
So it doesn't seem like uh anybody's here to make comments but a few of them that if you did read the minutes. Um there's been several concerns on traffic. Uh because after you know the uh establishment of Okaboji Grill and now Denali's um that is over seven hundred vehicles per day out there. Um obviously the curves the speed limit um the number of wells were discussed if you read the minutes and there is a uh. When you subdivide you have the option of potentially going with a D and R. Monitor and constructed well which is located here which uh Lou. Sandbuff uh chose to do not not sure when he was going to grow uh this area it's never been uh developed. Uh because any type of uh well that serves on a plat. Uh more than fifteen lots or twenty five people annually needs to be a certified D and R well so. With us knowing how Independence grows this subdivision that Lou developed started in nineteen ninety nine it's still not full. So they're looking to they're doing three plats. And they're looking to grow like two units at a time from what I understand and so they're gonna drill three wells. Um to allow those to be private they would serve underneath under fifteen. dwellings under twenty five people that allows us to get the separation flexibility because on a private well you can be one hundred feet from a septic system. With a uh public well you have to be two hundred feet so the radius and be able to get all the structures in there the retention pond and the seepage fields. Um it would be very difficult to put in another public well and be able to get the setbacks and develop this land at the you know. Are just number of units uh that they're requesting to build. So you we did take concern from the Ailer's property on the retention pond there's also gonna be a retention pond here. This area has been quite wet one of the questions too that people have asked me and since I was involved with it pretty much from the start. Lou by mistake had hired Jimmy Gallery when he bought the property go in there and he. Basically cut all the field tile that drains from Rick Johnson up on them clear to the river basin. And when you do that you know the water flows and then it ponds so with all the detention pond work the elevation. Work that they're gonna do with the grade of the street and everything else that will all be fixed um. Also though anytime you buy the river your water table's a little bit higher um but with the septic systems. And how we're gonna use pumps to keep them elevated and closer to the surface I see no issue with the septics. The wells will all be constructed I talked to the well driller that's going to be doing the project uh last week. He's gonna build them to the same construction details as you would for a public wealth. Um they're just gonna be monitored as private the developer or homeowner association will be responsible to get a water sample a couple times a year they'll work through us and be free. Uh but other than that everything is straightforward everything accompanies um. What we did uh requ- require from an ordinance standpoint with Buchanan County there's been a ton of conversation with me and in my office via emailing by the phone. And anytime Brad's willing to spend this type of money with this type of firm they're gonna get it right so and I and I feel um. That even with all the concerns and uh. Questions that we did receive I just know this area they just want to know what's going on in their backyard and they feel still feel that they could have a little bit of uh. Ability to put some input in it whether they own it or not so with Brad being new being from Colorado they just wanted to make sure that uh everything's right.
This retention pond area without always have water in it but only like last year you know away the drought condition and stuff like that. They'd be pretty much dry all the time or will it be holding water throughout the year?
I would suspect that it's probably the way they're gonna build it's gonna be dry most of the time it'll be no different than the one on one fifty that Halsey's built. You know only in really wet years now all of the uh discharges from water softeners and salt pump pits. Um any type of curtain tiles that we install around the septic systems which we put those in to dry out the area. Because we're pushing water to that area will discharge to that but I really think with evaporation sun and wind. Um you're not gonna have very much water in there unless it's a really. Wet season.
And then will the homeowner association actually be maintaining taking care of it and keep you care of the brush and weed problems and.
Correct.
That'll be up to the association on that.
Yeah correct yeah would it would not this would not be a county road. So all these units um would be. Addressed as golf course Boulevard and that private road would be taken care of just like the Sandbuff subdivision they would hire somebody like the Andersons or. Some type of snow removal service to take care of.
That would be a paid road. Correct internal road be paid because I think subdivisions require that to be such.
Correct.
In the septic systems each unit will have its own individual tank but four units will be sharing the same leach bed area.
So every two units is going so we're gonna uh design it a lot similar to uh or very similar to Larson's condos. All by three homes so what we did there is took two units. And we sized the tank instead of a standard twelve fifty we upgraded to a two thousand gallon. And what you do is you can come in the side and come in the end. And then that volume breaks it down so it's treated one solid to liquid then it's gonna go to a pump chamber. And then go to a bed system and that bed system right now with precipitation rates with what the engineer um did with their test holes. The bed itself is gonna be around fifteen hundred square feet so some of those depending on the contours might have a rock bed. Septic system treating that. A fluid might be thirty by fifty the next one might be. A different dimension it might be skinny and longer or it might be you know wider and more square so uh but yeah. We instead of each unit having a septic system itself. For aesthetic purposes and then just. Using a larger tank we're able to eliminate um instead of twenty four tanks out there we're only gonna have twelve. It's gonna help with footprint it's gonna help with the ability to put in patios and fences and all kinds of other things and we did that to Larson's and it worked out really well.
You've said you've taken a lot of calls and questions on this. Have you actually received letters of opposition? Have you actually received letters of opposition?
No. So uh, we did contact um thirty five individuals in and around there and again, we were pretty aggressive. With the list in regards to who we contacted. So obviously, we Kurt Ailers is right there to the east. But then John Blynn, uh, Rick Johnson, um. Randy Blynn, again, several people Shirley Burfeld, Rick Crawford, anybody in that subdivision. And again, the first time that this was rezoned, um, you know, we were pretty much hacked at the P and Z. Commission meeting because they wanted to know what was going on, how many the original preliminary. Plans were to include tennis courts and a swimming pool and another like clubhouse facility. And they went away from that um in regards to their plans because of the concerns from the neighbors. So. Obviously Brad owns the Nollies. I don't think he wants to make those individuals mad, wants to work with them, so he took that into consideration. And eliminated those plans.
Do you have any questions from the public?
I have a curiosity question, Chad. Typically, how deep are the retention ponds?
Commonly five to six feet is the deepest and that one thing you have to understand is this elevation of the road is already. Five to six feet higher. They're gonna build all that up. So the the retention pond elevation may only be three to four feet. And it can be shallower um all depending on the elevation. The lowest part of the property is here, which is gonna be the closest. The higher property is here, which allows that to be shallow just because of gravity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
You worked at the details on the two driveways that. Okay with that. Size and distance between them.
Yeah, so what I would do is I would make your motion with the same condition that the P and Z body and the city. Uh, in the Independence recommended in regards to the uh, commercial. And uh, emergency vehicles. But there was a motion by Spirit's Loggy with the condition from the city of Independence for emergency vehicle to have a twenty four foot wide. And twenty foot radius, twenty five, twenty four foot road with a radius of twenty feet wide at the entrance. And that was a motion that was a motion by Spirit's Loggy seconded by Frank. And it did uh, move forward with a six to zero vote.
You have other questions? Hearing then, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Starting the Indy properties.
And make a motion to approve with the condition on the driveway. Abide by.
And seconded.
All in favor?
Alright. In that condition, we can email that to Joe.
I was just gonna ask if you would email that to me and I'll just put it in with the resolution before I have Dawn sign it.
Amber will send it to you.
Do you have any idea of money plans to start construction?
So they wanted to expedite it, thus they're gonna probably request the way you do the second, third reading. They want to break it out in April. And and the contractor that have been on my uh. Email and and call me last week, April fifteenth, I think they're gonna get going and two units is their plan right now. And so I guess there's several interests as far as the people did cover the price point that was asked. They wanted to make sure too that the neighbors that they were gonna be of value, that it's not gonna devalue their property to the north, but uh. Three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, so two units right away and then see what the uh. Demand is moving forward.
He say who the contractor was?
So a lot of them are that are calling here out of Johnson and Lynn County. Because the, you know, Brad, Brad spent a lot of time in Iowa City and then the engineering firms from that area as well. So uh, trying to entice them to use some more local people because their prices are gonna be better, but. As of right now, everybody's called me out of Buchanan County.
Utilize the subs and maybe that are.
Yeah, again, sometimes it's gonna be a general and they can get some local. You gotta remember, most of that stuff is with the road construction, the septic and infrastructure of all pipelines and water lines. There's not a whole lot of people that do that type of stuff around here anymore, even when they're on Dick's plane being retired. So that's commonly an out of town type uh, business. So after that, as far as the actual builder, I know Brad has a uh. Relatives that did a lot of the Denali work here as relations out of the Buke, so I would assume he's gonna lean towards him being relative, but. I will tell. There's gonna be a lot of groundwork before they all have started.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, very good.
Appreciate it. I can enter into closed session. The board shall enter into closed session.
Fair Association.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fair Association. I already asked them next time.
There are people that you want to come forward. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. You guys all got. This sheet too, but oh.
Again.
So. This is for next year. Since we just collected for this year. Maybe it was last year. I'm not sure how long that was.
This is basically your twenty.
Twenty year.
Yeah.
Just as long as they come every year.
Right?
Yeah.
Forget about the numbers. Let's just go and count them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on that sheet I gave you, if you go down, oh, towards about two thirds of the way down, it does show what your money and then. Was used for and then um. And then how much of our own money we use. So like last year. Um, I think you give us six thousand on the poultry barn and we ended up spending like seventeen seven on that, so. And the year before was the hog barn. I think it was ten thousand you gave us for that. We spent.
My two.
So. We are using your funds and a lot of ours to do them improvements that we request, so.
Then the ribbons inject. Something that's always been um, taken care of by you guys for the kids in in the county. Um, we kind of slid the old four H building up to do some work to it. The new one, we're struggling with some. For a lot of reasons, but mainly it's neighbors and where to build it or how to build it and all that good stuff. So we decided we better spend a little money on that just um. The word uh, wanna put a new roof on it and then do some cosmetic things to the building and. Maybe some, we should do some stuff to fix structurally what we have there too. And and then digital signing, that's something that we would like to put out by the road and then. Part of the community sign effort that they're working on, that it can advertise the. Everything going on in the community, not just what's going on at the fairgrounds. Um, so. It's, there's an effort to do that for the, through the chamber, through economic development and everybody to. Create some community boarding that you can all comply together. And. Beef cattle barns, um, they just plain. Always need improvements. Right now, the biggest detriment is probably electrical. Last year, we did lease a. Electric generator to help or not. A diesel generator to produce electricity to help uh. Get enough power for the, everybody in their beef barns. It's seemed to have. More needs for electricity now in each stall than. What we ever would have had before, but between the fans and everything they put in there, we were certainly. Creating a fire hazard probably, so we. And then the other improvements is just signing that Garden Gate building and. And some of them buildings. Um, one thing that we would like to do is get together with tourism. And if tourism is going to hire a person, maybe see if we could hire him part time with him. So we've had one person for both. Um, because they had one person hired and they went away. So if they're back in that process and looking for something, we, we really need a fair manager. And that might be a good way for both of us to maybe be able to hire somebody better and. There's no better, bigger, larger tourism place in the county than the fairgrounds slash racetrack. So, I mean, that's uh. Something for us to kind of work together with and with tourism to see if it's a possibility.
That might be up for future discussion because right now the ARPA funds are designated. For a full time tourism director.
Okay.
And if you if. This is still in play going on. If that individual would be used for Fair Association, it's gonna jeopardize.
The funding that you got.
Right.
Oh, you designated it.
Right, specifically designated for that.
And that was just free year funded?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're through one year.
But you know that it doesn't hurt to open this dialogue and discussion up with them because you know, things don't happen overnight. If anything, would have big plans. I just wanna let you know that will. Jeopardize that funding.
Mm-hmm.
Double check. I think we're going to, they'll get their third payment after July one, I believe, Fred. I think they've already had two payments.
Right.
Eleven left.
That that'd be a good plan to put in place because I know tourism's struggling. How they continue making their positions sustainable. And I think they would entertain the discussion.
Sharing it, definitely. Yeah, and that would help whoever, if they hire a director, if they started coming to our meeting to be more aware of how. We do things and if that's, if it would roll in together, then. It would be a smooth, a smoother thing at that time.
So the rest of your sheet there just has some numbers on it, just kind of some historical stuff on what we've been seeing. Uh, fair revenue's been up every year, obviously, um. Been spending more up there too to draw in tenants, so um, as you go down, you can see that gate fee, gate number. Tends to increase as well along with our tenants. Um, that's just people through the gate and at the grandstand and we. So you, we bring a lot of people to the county in that short week um, for fair, so. Um, and it obviously is kind of like Fred was talking, the non-fair income part of that is what we need to improve on, so. I think the fair's doing its, its job. Um, is probably. Probably about maxed out on its capabilities of what we have for space up there. We need to work on the other fifty one weeks out of the year, so.
Now, the non-fair income, would that be rental of your buildings, like the campground and things like that?
Yep, basically everything else that happens up there, the other fifty one weeks.
Is, is along with income off the racetrack and stuff?
Oh, this racetrack stuff, it's not a little bit. So racetrack is separate then we, I split them numbers out. And Fred can elaborate on that, but there was a new contract for twenty three, so how that was, we got a little more skin in the game for our contract now, so. I do can elaborate on.
As far as how our contract is, okay. Our contract is um, we don't get the gate from the contract. But people put them on a racist zoo, so they get. Whatever they get from the pit area, whatever they get from through grandstands and then they also have, there's some TV stuff. That they get also when what we make our money on is beer and food. So far, that proved to be. Um, we was pretty nervous about it, so we had no idea how it would work, but by the end of the year, it was. One of our most lucrative years contract wise. So that's a good thing. Um, we're going to adjust it a little bit and. Get them to split up some utilities with us, we hope, because our big expense is water and electricity. And so we get them to pay some of that. It would, it would help us further, but.
The lighting that you got, I mean, you got huge lights out and stuff like that. Is there any upgrading? To that lighting, like go into a more high efficiency lighting out there and stuff?
You can, um, it's, what we have there is muscle lights, which is. You know, nationally, even though they're out of Iowa, one of the big lighting companies. Um, we've talked a little bit with Independence Light and Power about replace, replacing the. Fixtures on the lights themselves and. At last time we checked, it's been two years ago, but it was uh, wasn't cost effective to. No more than we run the lights to spend the money to upgrade the lights.
Wasn't there.
Um, if there happened to come up with some kind of a. Federal or state grant that allows you to upgrade lighting at that point. If we're, we'll look at it.
Now, the racetrack itself, is that all on your, your racing board up there to maintain that racetrack? And the bleacher arrays and stuff, whose responsibility is all that?
So within our contract. It's. It's basically all our responsibility, okay? But the whoever releases the racetrack is supposed to give it back to us in the same shape as they took it. So they're supposed to continuously maintain um, add dirt, add fixed, fixed fence and stuff like that. Um, I don't know how often you guys have been to races here or anywhere else in the state. But facility wise, we have one of the nicest facilities in the state. And we get that all the time when we get other people from out of there, so. Um, it, it's, our grandstands are in, in really good shape. Um, last year, we did a bunch of dirt work and gravel work and. And stuff up in the grandstand area and added some bleachers that were, they're basically portable bleachers that we bought from. The Winter School System, but we added them up there, so we have more seating and. We also got enough of them. We use them, fair wise, we move them around. Um, raised, elevated some spots, so made it safer, made it cleaner, made it look better and all that stuff. Um, clay wise, we put um. Last year, was it seventy five loads? I don't, I think seventy five to a hundred loads and the clay we bought.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, it, and we paid half, they paid. Um, and it, bruning brings it down from decor. And because it's a better base clay and don't have as much rock in it and everything. Um, and that's what we put on it. A couple of times, we put some different stuff on it in between that was local and. It had a lot more sand in it and it didn't hold together as well and stuff with uh. Um, and we actually tried to put wood chips in it too, which kind of worked, but wasn't the best plan. Um, but anyway, it's back to having a fairly good clay base. Um, track prep the promoter, um. Mainly with a local guy that used to prep the track is prepping it again and. Racers have been really happy. I mean, they're getting a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty cars a night up there. Um, they've got different schedule. Which necessarily, you wonder if it's gonna work, but they're scheduled not late. And it's not all Saturday nights, it's on Monday nights also. Um, so it kind of bounces back and forth. July is the one of them promoter times of the year that promoters don't make money in July. There's too much competition. So if you look, there's not very many races in July. I mean, they're gonna have sprint car races the first night of the fair here this year. Um, so instead of normal Saturday night races, it's gonna be sprint car races. They've got World of Outlaws coming to town. They will um, pack the stands, but they have to because. I think the purse on that is like forty five grand. I mean, it's, it's a big purse, so they gotta have a lot of people there to, to support that. Um, but. They're doing a, a good job. Promoters are still promoters. They're doing a, a good job, promoters are still promoters, you still have to be on top of them, but. Yeah, they're the best we've had for a little while.
It'd help, Jessup's having their fair at a different time this year, they won't have competing.
Um, yeah, we actually moved back, I mean, our, our, we're off two weeks back from our normal.
Yeah.
Two, so they.
We went forward, didn't, didn't Jessup go forward?
They went forward, yeah.
Yeah, and, and a big reason to move is carnivals. There is none.
Right.
And you'd still have to have, uh, the things so the kids can show livestock for state fair and stuff. And you gotta work all that into it, and so a combination of carnival and that's what changes it. And we don't really like to go on top of the Fourth of July, we, we definitely won't, but. We've been before and after it before, which don't work the best, but it still works, but it still was pretty much carnival, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, 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 well, and it's, so it, it's. The county next to us has their set week, they go off the Labor Day, so their fair week is always the same from Labor Day. So they kind of dictate then how the rest of the fairs fall in, so. It, they are actually on, uh, we would, so I mean, that's why we ended up moving, so we wouldn't overlap them.
Yeah, we are at the same time as. Jones County Fair, which.
We'll be there for two, we'll be there for two years, I guess, so that'll work, so.
So. Well, yeah, and, and the other thing is, is, um, we have our older country night on. Thursday night, and they have a younger gal over there, I believe, and their Friday night is their. Older rock and we have a newer country guy there. So we're kind of hopefully looking at a different genre of people for both nights and.
The ribbon and fair money that, historical, the board has already provided, uh. Does that channel through the fair board or is it checked, directed right through the extension? It goes to them and then they work with the extension service, okay?
Yeah, right.
Yep, we pay the extension back directly.
Okay, it probably wouldn't, first when you give a report that that's reflected on here?
Yeah. Okay.
So we're supposed to see that?
Any other questions? The board did budget wise, um. For the upcoming fiscal year that will go in fact July one, the standard fourteen thousand for the four H. And then an additional twelve thousand for the beef and sheep barn updates. So soon as July one hits, if someone would like to send the letter in requesting those funds, then I can cut the check.
Okay.
Discussed about, you know, like your signage thing you wanna do out there. And I think the consensus was the board, we'd rather see our money going towards taking care and maintaining the infrastructure that's only there.
Yeah, I, I mean, the signage to me is more a community effort for everybody.
Right.
So if there's something going on with tourism, it can be on our signage, if it's going on for us, it can be on our signage, if it's going on for. Um, celebrate Indy, it can be on our signage, you know, if the kids are going to state football, it can be on ours. And, and they're already doing some of that with the other signs in town.
Hmm.
It'd just be nice to have one that would go along with it and there's nothing on that side of town and.
Just need to be careful with what you do there, I'm not sure what those rules are, regulations as far as.
Kids, I mean, we know where we can place it, yeah.
I even know, like, in Old Town, Sweden, they put their sign up years ago down there. The business is an organization and want to put something up there, they had to make a contribution towards that sign.
Yeah.
To be able to put something upon the sign.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I just don't know how effective they really are. I drive by the one for library every day, probably multiple times, and I could not tell you what it's on.
You know, it's kind of surprising, we put the one there and we get calls on it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we actually hired a guy from Help Wanted sign on that sign.
Oh, wow.
So, and when Jen, Jensen looked at it, and I think he's gonna put one at, down here because of the Help Wanted part. So, there's way more visual effect than you think.
You've mentioned tourism, the tourism board would really like to see somebody from the fair board, can.
They do.
Their meetings.
We have somebody from the fair board that attends.
Who's that?
My name, I can serve a. Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds right.
If you're, um, are designated for the county, Mr. Wilson will still be with you out there.
Yeah, yeah, and he's awesome. Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Board of fair has been this year.
You go.
Warm weather.
Nice weather.
Over eighty, eighty degrees, that's all we want.
Now, we do have, um, going into closed session next, on the thing, you wanna take public comments for a gentleman?
Sure.
All right, and. So, as we go into public comments, three minutes each, please. No name calling. Oh, I said, um, as we go into public comments, three minutes each, and no name calling.
Sure, I might just point out in addition to the conversation about dirt and back hill between Clayton and Bob before there. Uh, I might add to that also that some of the wind developers are actually suing to keep that information from the public.
I have no questions in the board.
And since, yeah, we are not able to like answer deliberative questions, but yeah, you can, you can answer.
Wanna know. Were you certified lobbyist now? I know with Raleigh, he says he wasn't lobbyist, but he was certified. And you can't answer whether you do that or not, I, I, I care what you answer, but at least you know, if you didn't. And the other thing too, is kind of concerning is that, you know, if he's a certified lobbyist. And he works for Bright Future Iowa, maybe he still doesn't, but Next Era has provided financial. Uh, assistance to Bright Future Iowa, so just kind of, kind of interesting, as you talked about earlier, about the networking of who is who and who is. Who provides money on those things, so. You can't answer, so at least you know. Do the excuse.
Good, good information.
It is good information, yes.
Well, I just, I haven't been to a meeting for a long time, I was just curious what would go on.
All right.
I guess I don't find that to be a big, uh, common spot, I mean, the, next year, the company is trying to make a. Product everybody uses every day, and, uh, if they wanna. On the lobbyists, I guess everybody, touch up with better lobbyists, and. It all goes back to, right now, we're getting, uh, city of Indianapolis getting twenty. I believe six point eight percent of their power from wind energy, and REC is getting eighteen percent. And. Electricity should go down the line, and I think you gotta weigh the. Defense against the nagies, some people are, you know. Allowing them, I mean, you're. This ag lab business, you're putting a little, another two acres, taking ninety CSR ground on the edge of desert, just. That's one wind, one windmill to keep a, five, a few hours, what up? Yeah, money to the county, which, if you guys don't give me any money, I don't know.
Government sighs need money.
I think you just, you just gotta. Gotta look, gotta be able to see the force for the trees, you know, I mean.
We don't know what's gonna change after November elections, so we'll see what happens there.
Well, this is true. I'm sure the psychics go away.
Always appreciates everybody showing up.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, John, you're just telling us, don't wave, may I just go away?
Unfortunately, we had to kick you out for a closed session, we love having an audience. Thank you, thanks for coming.
I mean, I said, you didn't remember what you saw on that sign? I do, maybe.
Maybe.
But what, join the crowd, I mean, we're all on the same boat.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Thank you, thanks, Mo.